All this meeting to order, please. Thank you all for coming. I'd like you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You all standing?
Yes, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I can't hear you.
To the republic.
For which it stands, one nation.
Nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
A bit for right.
We're all in attendance. I just want to remind all the attendees that as we go through, say, things like policy, all those materials are on our website located with the agenda underneath the School Committee header or banner. So if you want to know more about the policies that we're going over, please avail yourselves of those things. Mr. Superintendent, any adjustments to the agenda?
Just one adjustment to the wording on five under, five A under new business. It's, and actually you wrote the wording down, so I don't remember. It's a motion to.
Let the substitute pay to ninety dollars as per policy GCGA.
Right. It's not an acceptance of the policy, it's approval of the rate.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of October 21st, 2020. I'm moved.
Second.
I think Ms. Bell's got the second.
I'll do it, Kristen, so you don't have to talk.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee for October 21st. All in favor, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. I love my hammer. Personnel, nothing there. Mr. Superintendent, take it away, please.
Well, first of all, I should say I don't have an updated enrollment report for you tonight because we've been having some issues and we got an extension from the DOE. So I rather than present you with inaccurate information, I would postpone that. I would suggest that you allow me to present that information to you at our second meeting in November.
Can I just say that we got a sheet in our packet?
Yeah, but it's not, I'm not confident that that's, you know, I'm not confident that that's what we've sent in. So I gotta look at that again.
I was excited because our population is up by six.
Yeah, it's a little, yeah.
That's not accurate.
I'm just not, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that is accurate, so I guess you have the sheet, so if it changes, I can, I guess I'd like to update you the next meeting anyway, regardless.
Thank you.
Yeah, still, there's still, there's a number of issues around this that are related to our funding, which is a whole different topic that I'm not going to talk about on the superintendent's report, but we will be talking about a lot as we go through the budget process because there's a, there's a lot to talk about. And it's, and a lot of it is related to attendance, so I just want to make sure that I have all that accurately before I try to share it with you and the impact. So you do have, you do have the October financials. There's nothing that stands out to me as something that's of concern. We are, oh god, did I write my notes? We are approximately a quarter way through the year. So, or is it a third of the end of July, August, September, October? Yeah, a quarter of the way through the year. And so you, but it doesn't always follow that way. But what I, the way I read that and I think you should be looking at it when you look at the report is anything that's, that's you know, significantly away from the seventy-five percent should be a red flag for you on the on the expenditure side, which is the first page. And then I figure it's not working well. On the revenue side, you know, we, we get those at different times and the, you know, again, we're, we're in pretty good shape there. I'm curious because I've, I've never, as you know, the CRF funds and the CARES Act money is a reimbursement model, so it might actually show, I'm surprised that it doesn't show more of of expenses being paid out than that we've had a chance to ask for reimbursement for. We have submitted reimbursement. When it's all said and done, with, with all of the CARES Act money and the CRF-1 and CRF-2 funds, we will be getting reimbursement somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.3 million. So, but, and then I'm gonna talk more about that because I think is either some things that I have failed to tell you or things that, that I haven't been really clear about. Because I've had a lot of people asking me about, about the CRF funds and you know, it's like, okay, well, that's, that's a great idea, but it's not something that I can get approved under a CRF fund. So any questions on the, on the financial report before I leave it?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple of questions over on the revenue sheet.
Sure.
I just, on the revenue sheet, it has several, so we're, we're what, July, August, September, October? So we're four months in and there's several spots here where a hundred percent of the revenue is yet remaining. And I, I was wondering why secondary tuition? Is that because we have no tuition sending students in the high school or?
No, we haven't received, we haven't received payments for those, those students at this point.
When do we expect to receive it?
I would have expected it by now, so you know, that would definitely be something that we would be looking at.
And then the same for the state agency client elementary?
Yep. Yeah, I'm not sure. Actually, Sue, if I don't know if you're still there, I don't, I'm not sure. Do we have any state agency clients? We do. Okay. I wasn't aware that we had some.
Yeah, we have to invoice for state agency clients and the department is rolling out paperwork right now, so we'll be again billing for state agency clients.
We must just have one, looking at that figure that's there?
We have a couple.
Okay, that's, usually get more money than that.
Then local balance?
Local balance apparently hasn't been carried over yet. We may be waiting and it's, I know somebody may have a question later, but spoke with Jen, actually I spoke indirectly to Jen, the auditor from RKO this morning and I think we may have to have the audit sort of reviewed before we bring over that fund. And honestly, I didn't, I would have expected more than that. That must have been all we chose to bring over in light of other financial things that we're dealing with.
And how about they add all that?
They all did. I'm meeting with, meeting with Josh on Tuesday because I wasn't actually able to sort of figure out what's going on there. I don't know why that hasn't come our way at this point. We should have received subsidy from the state, but we have, we set up a meeting for Tuesday.
And then I just don't understand the line associated with estimated revenues.
Yeah, I would, again, this is a different format than I'm used to using, so I would have to, I'll have to dig into that a little bit more. I wasn't, I'm not, I'm not sure. That maybe, I'll ask Jen, that maybe also connected to our, our audit.
Okay. That's all I had on the revenues.
Like that. Give me a second. Okay. Any other questions on the, on the financial report? All right. Wanted to talk a little bit about the MSSA conference. I know, I know, I think all of you actually went to some or, or some sessions for Maine School Board Association. We'll talk about that later, but if you're not aware, this day before the Maine School Board Association conference, the Maine School Superintendents hold their conference. And this year it was held virtually and it's on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and I attended. I, first of all, I just want to report because I think most of the school board members, Noel Campbell Badger, he's done a lot of work for us and pleased to announce that Campbell is back to work. It was really nice to hear from him and he seemed to be in, in, you know, pretty good spirits doing his job, so maybe that help, helps just to get back to work and get into his stride again. But he talked to us about a recently passed legislation or recently was passed before, but it's going to come online called Earn Paid Leave Act, in which employees, hourly employees can earn one hour for forty hours, up to forty hours of, of earned leave, of paid leave. There's a lot of questions about it and Ida and I have been talking about it. He, he gave us some information. But basically was, it was the first question that we were sort of struggling with is how do you determine if somebody is actually earning this or not? For instance, we asked, I asked if substitutes earn it. And basically the answer is no. And so at this point, I don't have a lot more to tell you. Ida and I are attending a workshop sponsored by Drum Woodson from Campbell next Friday, Friday the 13th. And so we'll get more information about that. We'll say I was very, very proud of Ida because she, she really raised, she raised this to my attention probably a month ago. And so we've been, we were, you know, there were a lot of people that were, hadn't, didn't even know that this had, this law passed, what was going into place January of 2021. Ms. Shumway?
Hold on. Okay. I just had a quick question about that. So did he, did Campbell mention anything about our collective bargaining agreements and the language in there that we already have for paid leave? Like is this in addition to the leave provisions?
Yeah, it's in addition. It's in addition. He did think, and this is why I want to get more information. It may not be, it may not apply to, well, I, I don't want to speculate on that, but yes, he did talk about that. And we will have to consider that for our hourly employees, like our secretaries, our ed techs, our custodians and our full-time employees, because the one litmus test, so to speak, was if they qualify for unemployment. If they qualify for unemployment, they probably qualify for this benefit. And, but then the question you just asked is the big next question is whether or not the people who we already give leave to, if this extends that leave or, or does not. But I can tell you, even if it doesn't extend it, it will change it because one of the provisions that schools are going to struggle with the most is that this leave is, they can build up to five earned paid leave days and you can't add, you can't have the restrictions that the, that we add for a lot of our other, our other leave, for our teacher leave and what's presently in place for our support staff. So it's almost like five personal days, for lack of a better term. So I don't want to talk a lot more about it because I, you know, we don't have a lot of information, a lot more information to come, but you should be aware that this is, you know, is, is coming into effect in Jan, in January.
Okay.
Jefferson? Denny?
I just comment, I might have some of the paperwork and handouts. I went to a session that covered that, Kristen. So I would be happy to hand that handout to you that says that we have to, we have to negotiate that this coming year. And as far as do people just heap on these leaves, the way it was explained to us was everybody has to be covered by a leave. We can't have more than one of those kinds of leaves. But if you're not covered by a leave, this new leave should cover you.
Yeah, it's intended to give somebody, everybody something instead of, right, that was what Campbell had said, but it was really kind of convoluted, so I don't want to, I don't want to go out on a limb quite yet, talk about what that means. Yeah, you know, the only notes I have here, it's one hour per forty hours up to forty, one hour per forty work, up to forty hours, which is essentially five days. And it can be used for any purpose. We can't restrict this leave, so there's other pieces that we need to negotiate. So all the, that was, that was not the whole conference. We also talked about evaluations and evaluations during this COVID time, which is ironic because we've talked a little bit about that with the administrators and I think a little tiny bit with the school committee, but the, what we're advised is we should need to reasonably meet district expectations. Probationaries is a must. Probationary teachers are a must. And ironically, we just talked about that in Policy Committee before this meeting, but so that was good. And then a big part of the conference was presented by Elick Miller and Peter Felmley, if you're familiar with those guys. And, and it really had to do with conversations that we had early in the year and I know that I had with the association, and I know at least Teresa is on and other members of the Back to School Committee around remote teaching and protections against our, not against, protections for our staff who are teaching remotely. This was very, was very, very good information and reaffirming, very affirming. And I think we've already taken some steps to address this, but it was nice to know that they were, you know, that the lawyers have been looking at this and I felt even more confident after listening to them, but basically they shared that there are prohibitions on recording or replicating stuff that is sent home from, from teachers, whether it's live or whether synchronous or asynchronous, that there is law, law prohibits recording and, and for people who are using our recordings to then record it themselves and save it or to replicate it and repost it. And said law can prohibit this and we need to put parents on notice. And we've kind of sent out a a notice to everybody who is doing remote learning earlier. And if we get into a red situation, probably even if we don't get into a red situation, we probably need to do that with all of our parents to let them know. They said students cannot make a recording without permission or, and if they happen to be in a classroom, they can't record in the classroom without permission or disruption. Recording without permission is sharing or sharing a recording without permission is, is, I already said that, that's against the law. For some reason, I wrote that twice. So as I mentioned earlier, if you were not aware of it, that we did, is part of the agreement, any student who is going to be remote, a remote learner had to sign basically two forms to be able to be a remote learner before they could start remote learning. One was an acceptable use policy, so they could use the technology that we provided. And the second was this, this document that we created. It actually came from the MEA and I think it very much is in line with what is being, what Peter and Elick said here that put, put the parents on notice that they can't, they can't use this information, they can't misuse it, they can't repost it. They can't do any of those types of things. And it was just really nice for me to hear from Drum Woodson that it's actually against the law. And if that were to happen, that there is legal ramifications. And our job is to let, make sure the parents know and the students know that they, that they can't do that. And if they do, they are breaking the law. So. Ms. Guyer?
As you know, we've had a few conversations about protecting our teachers and so I, I had in our conference, I had some discussion also and I can piggyback on what you said, that it looks like in law, our teachers are protected, but as of yet, there we're not exactly sure what to do with a student or what to do with a parent who decides to flaunt that law, so I don't know if your administrators have talked about what, what can be done about the remote privileges if a student decides to flaunt the law. But we sure don't. We have less available to us if a parent chooses to flaunt the law, is the way I've understood that. Do you have any additional information on that?
I don't, but I, my gut reaction is that any, any minor who chooses to ignore the law would be treated as any other minor who breaks the law. We would involve the law enforcement and and follow that path. Am I misreading what you're, what you're asking?
No, no, the question came up in my session and they said, well, what about the parents? And they said, well, for crying out loud, don't, don't take a parent's action out on the student. And that wasn't the implication at all and nobody here would ever want to do that. But still, the question remained, if, if a parent decides to flaunt the law, what can you do about that?
Right, right. Well, like I said, they, they really laid it out as that is against the law and that we would, we would call the police and have the police deal with it in the same way we would deal with any other lawbreaking issue. So that's, that's what I understood.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah. I really have a lot. I apologize. The, I want to take a little bit of time to go through and I think it was included in your packet, I hope it was included in your packet, the the list of, of COVID, our CF2, CRF-2 funds. I'm not seeing it as I look through, but sometimes I don't remember if it's not in there?
I don't, I don't remember that it was. I think it was in last month's or last meetings.
Well, I read it to you last time. I didn't think I had, and actually Ms. Shumway and I had a brief conversation about this. I don't think it, I don't.
It's not in this packet, I don't believe.
Have you seen anything that looks like that? I know I sent, you probably saw this, this looks familiar because that's what I sent you before. This is the R2 on the back page. I want to take a little bit of time, I want to talk about the CRF funds and the CARES Act money first of all. But like I said, I've got a fair amount of feedback from a number of different places. And felt like we had a little, we did have a little more time, not a lot more time, with the CRF-1 funds. And so we, that list is significantly longer, even though that was less money. That was six hundred and forty-eight thousand or six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And so we ordered a bunch of stuff, which gave you that before. But then, when the second time came around, we had, we had a very short window and I got a fair amount of feedback from the administrators and then from, some from the, the school committee. And but we're sort of recognizing that our window was very quick. So this is no different in my mind because they're federal funds than our ESSA grants. And in fact, CRF-2 was filed through what's called JEM, not that you need to know all this stuff, but it follows the exact same thing as our, as our title grant. So it's, it, it, it probably should have been flushed out a lot more, but we just didn't, we just frankly didn't have time. So a number of you, I think at least three of you, if not four of you, gave me ideas and I tried to incorporate them as much as, as we could and of course the administrators as well. So I'm going to go through the list with you, but the, I guess the thing I want to reemphasize to you is that all of these funds have to be spent by December 30th. So we have essentially close to 1.3 million dollars, which sounds really, really nice. But we, you know, we're a little tiny bit limited on what we can spend them on because they have to be directly, directly related to COVID, the impact of COVID. And they can't supplant anything that's in your budget. If you have it in the budget, you can't use COVID monies to not spend your budget money. You have to, you know, they can supplement it, they can extend it, they can, as long as you can make it connected to COVID. And it has to be expended by December. For instance, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Stoneton and I were just recently talking about graduation and about some of the modifications that we need to make or will have to, we believe we're going to have to make like we did last year with respect to graduation. Mr. Campbell's asked if we could, if that could be a, used as a COVID cost, could we cover that? I said, well, two things. First of all, the COVID application has been submitted. But even if it hadn't been submitted, the answer to that is no, because that's, that's an expense in next June and you can't, and you can't pay for that upfront and, and take delivery of it and, you know, so to speak, in, in the future. Now, having said that, because I don't know how much, some of you are paying attention to other things, there has been some softening of the federal regs with respect to that, but not in that particular thing. So the answer is still no, we can't do it. But for instance, they were telling us, and this, this really was hard to follow, that we not only had to pay for, but we had to take delivery of anything that we purchased before December 30th. We had to actually have it in place. Well, you can imagine if we got 1.3 million dollars and we're a small school system, all the schools in the state of Maine got that amount or probably more. And virtually everybody who received this money purchased technology, additional technology. We purchased a bunch of technology and we're purchasing more technology with this. So the people who are supplying technology to the, all the schools in this state of Maine are not, they can't possibly get all of those things in place by the end of December. So the, the DOE worked with the feds and they got, basically they, the statement was we're expected to take delivery of anything that, you know, we, we purchase by December 30th, but if the vendor isn't able to do that, then we can't, we wouldn't be held, we wouldn't be held responsibility, responsible for that. So of course, once you make one exception, you have to make more exceptions. And so there are other things that are on this list that will fall into that same thing, which basically what I'm saying is the DOE is now saying if you pay for, but don't receive, actually receive it in your, you know, in your schools prior to December 30th, that that's still going to be okay. They further extended, for instance, and I know this gets complicated, I apologize for that, but it's, it's for instance, Mr. Delisle was looking at purchasing some licensing. And at first they said, no, if you purchase a one-year license, they will pay the portion of your license from September to December, but you, it's on you to pay for January to June. Which doesn't make any sense because it's not supposed to take the place of anything that's in your budget. So you, in order to qualify, you wouldn't have had any of this money in your budget at all. So if you, if you pay for it from September to December with COVID funds, you can't use COVID funds to pay moving forward. It, it just, it didn't make any sense. So they ultimately agreed and they they didn't agree as much as we'd like them to, but basically they agreed that they would pay essentially out for one year. So now we're in a process, Mr. Delisle is in the process of securing some licensing for some technology, servers and such stuff that he knows way better than I do to, for, to get a one-year contract. We would like to have had them say, we'd like to have entered and got a better deal with a three-year contract. But they won't, they won't go more than one. So at least there's some softening. So that's the, that's sort of the overview. I want to quickly run through the, the stuff that's on the list. And, and I wanted to give you all that background because some of you may say, is this really the highest priority? Well, you know, if it was in our budget and we could spend it any way you want, maybe some of these things wouldn't be purchased, but as I meet every week with the Connecticut Valley Superintendents, we've done a great job, people have done a great job of sharing what they've been approved for and what they had to say in order to get approved for that. So I'm going to share that with you. The first one that's on top of the list, and I will send this out to you tomorrow. I thought I had gone out with the packet, so I will make sure to resend it to you tomorrow. But the O2 Prime is the, the product that Siemens is, is installing. It's the one that emits ionized, I think it was called, particles into the air. It collects and kills the viruses, all viruses, not just the COVID virus, but all viruses. And it's, it's, it, it's unlike other things that are line of sight or those types of things, this will cover a hundred percent of the room. So this is a device that's really expensive and it's, and it's available, or I should say devices. It goes into our UNIVENTS, so all of our classrooms that have UNIVENTS, which is about half the classrooms here at the grade school and all of the middle and all of the middle school, all the high school will be able to have this product put in place. And I'm proud to say that I, they, they sent me the, the bid and, or the quote for this, it was 290,000. And I just called the muffins that I guys can't afford that. All, all I can give you is 240,000. So they agreed to do it for 240,000. So we saved $50,000 there. That was nice. So that's been ordered. That's, that's, and again, because the rules hadn't been softened when, when first put this in place. So I had to call them and say, the first thing I have to ask you is can you deliver this product by December thirtieth? And they still assure, ensure me or assure me that they can. So the sooner the better. Related to that, we have a number of rooms in the grade school that do not have UNIvents. And we were, we had five air purifiers that, that are called Beyond Guardian. They were donated by a parent in the community who works for the company. And three of them were put at the grade school. One was put in the, at the high school, one at the middle school. And so I talked to Mr. Lab and asked how many we would need to, to put them in the rest of the rooms at the, at the grade school. It will essentially do the same thing. They use by NASA. They're, they're very effective tools to do essentially the same thing. And I, I'm not going to tell you what the price is, but essentially the, the gentleman who's, who's doing this for us, a parent here in the community is giving us to it, giving them, selling them to us at a third of the cost. So two thirds off. Another great deal. So I'll do some quick math. Once you see that, you'll figure out what they're supposed to go for. So those are the first two things. Those are the big, well, and the next item is technology upgrade. And if you want to know more about the technology upgrade, I'll have to ask Mike to, to jump in. But I, all I can tell you is that he gave me a list that totaled over 600,000. And I said, Mike, I can't give you, you know, we gotta, it's not the only thing we can spend money on. And so I, we've, we've, we've budgeted 250,000 for technology upgrade. And like, that includes switches and servers and things that I don't know that much about. So if you want to know more, I'll gladly let Mike talk about it in a second. We put, we put in money for a new food service van. We have, well, I was told we have a food service van. I went out and checked them and I actually want to talk about that in a second. And it's, it's not adequate. Erin used it last year. She said she felt very unsafe. I've, I've since looked at it and we were getting ready. The inspection sticker has run out. Had a hard time starting it. We know that it needs some work. I would say, and we talked about this in policy committees a few seconds, a few minutes ago, that I would like to, I'd like to, I'd like to find a paper first of all. Here we go. I'd like to suggest that following policy DN, school properties disposition, that we follow what it's DN and it's E, which says that any property determined to be worthless or for any reason considered to be inappropriate for sale shall be disposed of in a manner the superintendent deems appropriate after someone forming the board, which is what I'm doing now. With recycling as a priority where feasible. There's more to that policy, obviously, but for me, I would like to use, I would like to give that van or sell that van, essentially give it to Northeast Charter. This is a little bit off the topic, but it, but it has to fit in here because that's where it belongs. We have, we're renegotiating. I met yesterday, yesterday, yes, yesterday with the Northeast Charter because we don't need all those extra runs now. And so to, and, and that, they're kind of struggling with that. And so if, if they were, they're happy to take this van as a way of, of making that deal a little more palatable for them. And for me personally, I don't want to spend any money on this van. What we talked about and Jenny suggests, I think it's a great idea. If I get somebody, I've had a couple of people here look at the van, but I'll get somebody like Parks or somebody to come up and take a look at it independently to, to give us an assessment. But I think it needs bodywork. I know it needs at least a complete brake, a brake set. And I think it needs more. So it's a 2007. I don't think it's, it has any valuable, any value to us except as a bargaining chip with Northeast. And Larry is on the, on this Zoom as well. So if you want to ask him about that, that he certainly can give his perspective. He was on that meeting with me and, and Scott Riccio, the owner of Northeast Charter yesterday. So you can ask him that. So. So, so that, so we have, we have money in there for a food service van. We have sent out bids to four different dealerships with the specs for what we're looking for a van. Erin had provided some things that she would like to see in a van and we're to try to come as close as we can to that. And, and, and provide a decent van that she's not afraid of driving. Right now she is using her own personal vehicle to take, you know, to go to the store, to take things from one school to the other. And really not something we should, that practice we should continue. Related to that is there's money in there for food service equipment. If you have a van, then you need racks and you need, I can't think what they're called, warmers and, and such to, to hold food and stuff in. So we put in some money in there for, for food service equipment. The next two things on the list are, are, might, might make you wonder how, you know, how that happened and why it happened. So I'll go through that. We have specked out a tractor with, with a snow blower attachment and a bucket loader for the grade school. We have one at the, at the high school. The reason for that, and this is one of the ideas we stole from, from the Connecticut Valley superintendents, is while we have, the old wing doesn't have vents, the UNIvents, the, the new wing does, and we need to make sure we keep the perimeter of the school clear of snow so that the UNIvents will work properly. And, and I said, yeah, we're going to need to do that too. We, our, our building here does need to have the perimeter kept clear. And so we have money in there. So we have also currently specked out, we have, we've sent out the four different companies, the specs for the tractor, for, for a tractor with those attachments. The next thing on here is it's actually the wrong wording, but the DOE doesn't, doesn't care. A yard cart. That's one of the things that was suggested from one of the school board members looking at, well, I'll tell you the way it initially came up was that with all the things we need to do, additional equipment and things we need to bring for sporting events outside that we, we, you know, the current, I guess it's a golf cart is not adequate and, and is whatever. So this, this provided us an opportunity to do that. Ironically, that was refused initially from the DOE, but then they called me. They've, they've been awesome to work with and, and it basically said, well, you, you know, if you're, if you have your PE classes outside, if you have other things that, that are, that are classroom related that, you know, need to move things around, then if you change, if, if they won't, they won't provide funding for athletics and things like that, but they will for anything related to classes. How you choose to use it after it's been approved is up to you. So we changed that around. That was approved. And we did purchase a, it's called a K nine. It's, it's a coyote product. And that was a, that is a purchase from a, a person who, from Manchester Motors who lives here in Winthrop. So that has not been delivered yet, but that has been, that didn't have to go through the bid because it's, it's less than 25,000. Actually a lot less than 25,000. So they didn't have to go through the same process as the others. We talked about, again, something that I stole from the Connecticut Valley superintendents. And actually, this is one of the things that one of the school committee members came up with is money for remote supplies. So as we're preparing for RED, what we did was we identified some additional supplies. That's the key point, additional supplies. So if you think about something like art or music or PE where they need additional equipment, then because they, they, they have to keep them sanitized and they have to, all that stuff. So we identified a, a pool of money that we divided up between the three schools and the teachers in the process of identifying what those, what that money will be spent for, for additional remote supplies, additional supplies for their classrooms so that they don't, they can minimize the amount of sharing that, that needs to happen. So we also identified $20,000 for technology tools, which is a, a bit of a continuation of what we had started before. But it's for things like, and again, Mike or Megan, is Megan on here? Yeah. Yeah, Megan, if I want to chime in. We, we, we bought second devices for all of the, the classroom teachers, but some of them wanted other types of devices and that other, some of their peers were using for, for teaching tools. And so that could be, that could be in there as, as well, as long as it's directly connected to the impact of COVID and what they're planning to do for instructional purposes. And the last thing that's on here, again, came from, from one of you is some money. Probably not nearly enough, but it, but some money to look at live streaming. And we, we were thinking about live streaming events. And the, this is another one of those, even though it's not a lot of money, it's, it's just under, it was 5,600 bucks. And they said, this was rejected initially, but they were like, well, we're talking about, we want to live stream. We can't, we can't have our parents attend. So we wanted to have a way. You know, we've been very blessed. We've had people who've been recording and making that available for our parents, but we wanted to figure out a way to live stream. And they said, well, again, we're not doing anything like that for sporting events and those types of things. But if you want to think about all the things that you are doing within your school, whether it's a concert or a play or, or an art show or any of those types of things that are related to things that you're doing in the school during the day, then we'll, we, that'll be approved. So that's all the list that has been approved at this point. That equals 689,669. Again, the, the real key piece here is all of this money, everything that's going to be purchased, needs to be purchased or paid for before December thirtieth. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work. We've done a lot of work at this point, but there's a lot more work to do. So now what questions can I answer for you?
Before any other questions, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Dykett stabbed me and said, Joe was waving his hand around. It's probably 25 minutes ago, Joe. I don't, I don't know. It, it might be inappropriate to call on you now, but did, did you have a question, Joe? You're muted. You have to unmute.
Thank you, Janet, Janet, for doing that. However, I get so interested in what Jim was doing. I forgot the other question because it was before Jim got into the list.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Petrowski.
That's okay. That's all right. I'm sure we'll come back.
Write it down.
I just wanted to know one thing. What happened to my bus, my extra bus?
They wouldn't approve it. No, I'm sorry. It didn't, it didn't make the list.
I thought you were going to get one with a snowplow on it too.
That would work. That would work. Ironically, Larry wants to weigh on this, but I did, I did share with Northeast Charter, reminded Northeast Charter, just said that I do have a bus driver's license. So if we need some additional drivers, if they leave some of those reef, those re, rehab buses, if they want to leave one here, we need to, to get kids from point A to point B. I'm happy to do that. So that's the CRF funds, but I want to, there's another piece related to that. Oh, I did want to say, I already did mention that we, we have sent out bid, bid specs for a van and for the tractor. So those are out and I don't have the date right in front of me when it's due, but it's, it's still a few weeks out before that has to be back. The next, this is just an FYI. You'll see more of this, but if you want to note on your calendar, this came, this was a suggestion from Chairperson Guyer. I think an excellent suggestion with two new board members coming on board and, and I don't, I don't know when, if Jana or Sue have been through any of the trainings, but I have scheduled on January 27th, a board workshop with Maine School, MSMA. Steve Bailey is going to come down and do that for us. I will tell you now that it will be in person, will not be via Zoom. We'll do that here at the, you know, whatever that room is, the big room I have over there. I call it multi, but I know that's not the right name.
All purpose, all purpose.
All purpose, all purpose. Not just multi, but all purpose.
But all, which is, could be really scary. So.
Yep, yep. So anyway, so Sue and Janet and Joe, if you can mark your calendars and, and did we lose?
Listen, I didn't see you write that frantically. What happened?
I actually opened up my calendar and almost added it and then I realized it was January. I'm off the hook.
So Kelly, I know you, you've, hopefully, hopefully you're still there. I know your, your video is not there, but hopefully you caught that. If not, you will, you, you will hear more about it later.
I am. If, do you have a tentative time yet for that?
It'll be six o'clock.
PM, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't do anything at six in the morning. And so the last thing I have, and this is probably, actually it's not the last thing I have. But I, I need to, you can decide tonight, and I don't know that we need a vote on this, but I, but I most definitely need to make the school committee aware. The, I'm getting some questions from the building administrators because the COVID tech monies that are in the CRF one funds expire on December 30th. With the fact that we are still green and who knows? We, I think we have to prepare to continue. They're, they're really worried that if we don't continue the COVID texts after December 30th, that we, we won't be able to run our schools, at least not safely. So I had asked Ida to put together some numbers and I had shared, I actually shared the summary of the sheet with you guys a couple of times. And we figured out what it would cost of the COVID ed texts that we presently have, work the remainder of the year. And that's what I'd like to have happen. But in order to do that, we would need to expend regular budget monies. But you may recall that at the beginning of the year, I was asked to prepare for curtailment. And so we, there was things we did not purchase. And then subsequently I shared with you that there was some balance in the looking at the staff that we had versus the staff that we, or the staff that we budgeted for versus the staff we have. I guess what I'm saying to you is I feel very confident that we could have those COVID texts continue for the rest of the year and, and stay pretty comfortably within the budget. But I obviously wouldn't do that without, without your blessing or your thoughts. What I would suggest, if you'd like, is that you can think about it. But we can talk about it now and you can, you can let me know in December if you, what you want to do. Jana?
Is that, I mean, I'm assuming that you checked this too, but we also hired additional teachers and staff. But that money is okay to extend past the December deadline?
Well, that's what I'm saying. This money, in order to do this, I was, I had enough money in the COVID monies to extend the teachers. And, but I don't have enough money to extend the COVID texts. So and some of that had to do with, I mentioned earlier about renegotiating the contract with Northeast Charter. Some of that money for extending the teachers came from that. And, but, but I don't have, I don't have any money to extend any COVID money to extend the COVID ed text beyond December. So I really need the board's permission to do that.
I'd like to make a suggestion that you write a memo. I'm great at that, I know. That you write a memo, what the request is, how many texts we have in each building and just a, a little bit about what they do for us in each one of those buildings. And the financial impact and your recommendation. And send that to us ahead of time so that we have most of our questions answered ahead of time. And then if you want us to vote on it, we can do that. We can put that on the, the next meeting's agenda.
Yeah, I, I actually love that idea. I wasn't sure. I would have put it on the, the next meeting in November, but you know. but you know, I know you typically like to do financial stuff at the first meeting, but I would have, I would prefer to put it on for the, for the next meeting on the 18th.
Yeah, that's what I said, the next meeting.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. But we need, we need to have something to look at and something to ponder.
Yep. So I just want to give you that, that sort of broad overview and then I will follow it up with, with some more specifics and a specific request.
Yep, that's great. School committee questions for the superintendent. That was a lot of info.
I have more.
I know, but that's, this is just about the COVID funds.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Next, this next thing is very, very quick. Chairperson Guyer pointed out something, this is a, this is about hitting your stride type of thing. You will notice on agendas for me moving forward that I, there, I like to have under superintendent's report, appointments, retirements, and I can't think whatever else. I don't have it in front of me. Resignations, yes, thank you. So what I didn't have under here, what I, what I apparently failed to share was that we did get a resignation from Patty Mitchell, who's, was the guidance secretary at the high school for a lot of years. That was filled with transferring Kristen Barnes from the grade school to the high school. I had her request. And so that left us a vacancy in the, in the grade school, which is what's on this agenda, that Nadia Thompson is, has been appointed, has been appointed as a winter grade school secretary. So I wanted to give you a little bit of that background and hopefully we'll capture that in the minutes so you have it officially. But what you should have from me on a monthly, on a monthly basis, even if there are no appointments, say none, appointments, resignations, and retirees should all, should be there every month. So that doesn't, this doesn't happen again in the future. Am I, I would trust my memory. I may have told you, but I didn't. I know it's not in writing anywhere, so we'll definitely put it in writing.
Thank you.
And that's it.
School committee, do you have any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, here we go. School committee chair report. So four of us went to the MSMA conference and I'm going to ask folks to just very quickly go over what they gleaned to share with the rest of us. And so who would like to go first? If you want me to go first, I will, but Ms. Dykett wants to go first. Yay. Thank you.
Maybe it'll wake me up a little.
Um, are you saying that the superintendent was boring in his presentation?
No, I'm saying I'm exhausted from teaching all day.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so, um, I wasn't, I don't know, I wasn't wowed by some of these, but part of the reason why I wasn't wowed by some of these was because I feel like between being on the school committee and being in school, most of this was common sense, of this is already happening and I'm already seeing a lot of it. So I was actually happy about that too, because I felt like I actually knew what was going on. Because going into this, I was going to know anything that was going on. So I went to, Crisis Communication was one of my courses. And I'll try to shorten this, but I did take a bunch of notes. It more or less went over the fact that we have to follow the guidelines that are put forth by the CDC and all of that. But that schools came out with really long forms. And if there's ways to shorten those up a little bit and break them down, they said to sort of treat it like your Bible and quote from it. So to have that document somewhere, like on the web, which we do. And then if you need to pull out specific things, just to pull out those specific points to tell parents and everyone else. They talked about sort of the six requirements that are put out by the states, which are things like wearing masks, the six foot, three foot, 14 foot, depending on the activity, your, your PPE and all of that. That stuff should be followed and should be pretty evident to everyone in dealing with schools and all of that. It talked about some confidentiality things when talking about probable cases, possible cases and actual cases, obviously just to make sure that there are no student names or could be students who could be identified as a senior on the basketball team and there's only one senior on the basketball team, things like that. But that you could use things like basketball team or, you know, Mrs. Smith's class or, or things like that. But just to try not to be able to really pinpoint a student, which can be hard. They talked about having a sample of standard operating procedures. Make your own letters, your own forms for each school district. And again, pull from those guidelines, but don't just necessarily tell people to always go to the guidelines if you are presenting that. There's no mandate from the state that will have you close your school, no matter what color you're in, that is still left up to local control. So if you're, and you, and you feel that your school can still go without being hybrid or whatever, then you should be able to do that if there's not any cases or transmission in your community, was how I took that. So that was one. Then I went to avoiding legal issues and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that because Jim actually put most of what I put down there, which was the virtual, the recording of any Zooms or any meetings should be, we were told they should be treated as a copyright of the school. And that would be your legal grab if people were to share those or distribute those without permission. That kids is one thing, and again, treat it like if that kid was in your classroom, you wouldn't necessarily allow them to take out their phone to record your class. So they shouldn't necessarily be recording Zoom. Parents, obviously it is a different issue. Superintendents usually then get involved to ask the parents to remove them due to confidentiality, but it is school, it's under the school copyright law. So if there are issues with that, then that would be our legal recourse. Yeah, go ahead, Jim, or Jenny, but Jim.
Yeah, I just, actually the term that, that I didn't say before, but just reminded me is it's intellectual property is what we have as a school. We create something.
And then one other kind of cool thing that I took away from that because they talked about students being in situations and backgrounds and to have everyone have an equal background. They talked about teachers actually taking a photograph of their class and uploading that and then having your classroom background be the background for everyone in that class, which I thought was kind of a neat idea. I hadn't really heard that from anyone. And then the last one that I attended, because I only did the Saturday one, was the school risk management, which came about after Columbine. It was pretty interesting and there was actually a lot of information. I won't spend a lot of time on it. It was recorded as well. But it's just the fact that when you talk about threats within a school and from students, there should be a team. And this, the Maine School Safety Center is trying to put together, they're piloting this program right now in three schools. And then they're going to try to get this into other schools. But it's school emergency management training, threat assessment and mental health, social and emotional learning and trauma-informed practices, site and school climate assessments, youth-based policing, legislation and policy, and then restorative justice. And then it sort of broke it down into, there should be three key members on a team, which is admin, law enforcement and a school-based counselor. And that should be the, the major part of the team. And then on this would be teachers and bus drivers and maybe school lunch workers or other people who work directly with some of these students. They've had a pretty successful rate of if kids make a threat in, in these schools that they're piloting, it has not escalated really to any violence, which is what they're trying to stop from happening if they can figure out what's going on with these kids and why they're so angry or why, what the trauma is behind, what's going on that they can possibly stop some of this violence within a school. They talked about it being on an escalating basis too. You know, and kids joking around, I mean, we have, they talked about zero tolerance. Policies don't work because, you know, kids could be joking around saying, I'm going to kill you, which we can't take as a joke. We have to take that as a threat. But they talked about different cognitive levels of students and when they make some of these threats. So it's, that's why it's really important to have those multifaceted people like law enforcement and like mental health workers on these teams, rather than leaving it up to a behavior interventionalist or up to a single administrator to make those calls sometimes with where is a student coming from, what is the real issue going on and so on and so forth? But to take a group approach to it. And I believe they're also trying to certify all schools in this over the next few years. And they talked about the fact that there are people that are feeling very overwhelmed, but they feel like this is an integral part of what we're already doing in schools, that it's not a real additive. There are some pieces just so that you could actually be certified, but they really are trying to make it, make it sort of everyone's priority and a part of all of that together. So.
So can I ask you, so who's they again? I missed that part.
So they are, well, their team is, they have FBI, an FBI member, a secret service member, someone from NAMI. This is coming out, I don't know if it's Maine DOE, but they do have information on the DOE website, but it says Maine School Safety Center. So I don't know if that's a new school safety center.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, a new agency. I kind of want to go back and watch the video again, to be honest with you. She had a slideshow that I just took a bunch of screenshots from, but that's a lot of information, almost too much just to share in this meeting. But for myself and in being interested in trauma-informed teachers, because I feel like that's something that we're all lacking training in right now. It, you know, this talks about that because a lot of kids are coming from trauma, from trauma and their, their reactions or their actions are affecting not only their education, but everyone's education. The amount of special ed services some of these kids are taking as well. And so if we can be more informed in that, it, it may help. So.
And is this supposed to be part of our emergency?
They're trying to integrate that into schools. That's what they're piloting it in three schools right now to see how it goes. And they have done some work on it and it's on, it's based from a Virginia, Virginia-based school model. Functions of a behavioral threat assessment team is what they sort of call themselves within the school. That's what we would sort of have set up. And they talk about it being a multidisciplinary attempt. Okay, so they have FBI, Federal Bureau of Investigation, Secret Service. They have a US Attorney's Office involved, NAMI, school psychologists and school administrators. And then further, Department of Corrections, Maine State Police, Department of Education, Family Engagement and Cultural Responsive Specialists, Maine School Safety Center, Maine Chiefs of Police, Maine Sheriff Association and Cumberland County District Attorney's Office are the ones that are all involved in making this plan.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Super. Who wants to go next? Okay, Ms. Bells, thank you. You have to unmute yourself.
My, my mouse was not working. Okay. I went to seven sessions. Do you want, well, one of them was the same as Jana's, the.
Yep, you can just skip that.
Okay. So I'm going to be a little more succinct so I don't keep you here all night. But just like Jana, I took copious notes and I would like to re-watch all of them because they were so good and there was so much information. And there's also, I don't know, like another 20, 25 that were recorded that I can go back and look at as well. I think through November 13th, which I thought was a really great option, which I plan on doing.
Went? Are you glad you went? That was your.
Very. I was very glad I went. So the first session that I saw was addressing systemic racism in rural Maine. It was a round table and it was hosted by a group of people from the Camden area schools. They created a task force and it was the superintendent, a board member and two students. And they basically just talked about, you know, the perspectives of the students. The audience had questions. They were really just kind of trying to light a spark around the state to get people talking about this. They talked about what they'd experienced and basically the idea is to take steps where maybe things like looking at curriculum, making sure that it's being taught from different perspectives, in particular history, but all subjects. And then also they talked a lot about just opening up discussions, whether they're uncomfortable or difficult or not, but just to get people talking about it. Do you want more than that or is that enough?
No, I think real precise and, and then people can come and talk to you anytime. We have some of the handouts and.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. Okay. The second session I attended was meet the commissioner. So it was kind of nice to just hear from Commissioner Macon herself. The things that I focused to tell you about were basically what, what the Department of Education's goal is, which is to become service-oriented, that supports professional expertise and authority of administrators and educators. And she talked about a lot of the resources that you can access through the DOE website. Things with MPBS, the MOOSE program that they did, SEL for Maine, which is socio-emotional learning. And then another program that they're starting is called REV. I don't know if anybody's heard about it, but it has to do with remote learning, which I'll use that kind of, because one of the other sessions that I attended was about that and that was kind of interesting. And unfortunately I missed the very beginning of it because I couldn't get the volume to work when I was trying to zoom in. Let me find my notes about that one, but it made me think I'm, of Mrs. White. I thought she might be interested in this. So this is a pilot program that they're starting where there's going to be courses available January. I think it's starting in January where you can learn. It's really about coming together and thinking outside the box and thinking of ways to do remote learning. But it's not, oh, I just wrote it down. So it's a pilot, you have to, you have to take this course and then you can apply for, to be, to do a pilot in your school. There's going to be one awarded to each district. And it can be, it's, it's, it's per superintendent region actually. And the pilot that is awarded is up to $250,000.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah, and it says, if the district is interested in piloting, go to E-N-G-I-N-E. And then, what else did I want to say? There's going to be different rounds. The first round, there's going to be 14 awards and then there's going to be two more rounds with 13 each. If they have more people interested than they can award, they will base it on high need and at-risk population. There's so, there was so much to it. I was like, wow, I could watch this about four times. I did write down the names of the women who are, who are running this session so I could contact them if I needed to. You get a coach and you get on a pilot team. I could go on and on and on, but it sounded really exciting and new.
Sounds great. Mr. Superintendent, do you think Mrs. White knows about this new thing?
She's on. You can ask her. I'm not aware of it.
There we go.
I have not heard of this at all, but I can make some time in the next week or so to sit down with you, Ms. Bells, if you're, if you're available.
Absolutely.
And we can chat a little bit about it, especially if they're awarding 14, I assume statewide, so it would be four districts or 14 superintendent regions. So it would be four districts or fourteen superintendent regions. That's not a whole bunch to start with, so. Oh, okay, so, um, so we would maybe want to get moving on that if that's something that we think would interest our district right now. I think.
Yeah, we can actually, I have access to the, you can actually watch the session with me again, too, if that would be helpful to you to hear. Firsthand, because you might understand it even better than I did, what they were talking about. But it didn't really make me think of you.
Did that session have any handouts, Ms. Bell?
Not that I, not that I took. But I did take their name. There, I did write down too, that it, there's seventeen million dollars funded to Maine for it. What else? Oh, there's just so much. But yeah, I will, I will get together with Mrs. White and give her all the details. If, to see if it's anything she's interested in. Another session. That I attended was. First Amendment Challenges for Schools: Managing Schools and Respecting Free Speech. This one, they went over some famous cases that they kind of use for the basis of. The standard of where free speech. Ends and basically what they use is the Tinker versus Des Moines. Standard and if something causes a material and substantial interference with schoolwork or discipline. That would be where free speech ends. Like I said, they, they went over a couple of different. Famous cases for their standards, but. That was the, kind of the gist of that one. Then I attended a policy primer session, which is basically talking about policies and. Things like that, that was really helpful for me personally. And then I, oh, the last one that I, I attended was school and district equity audits. That was really informative. There was a lot of kind of how-to on how we can do that as a district. It was given by. Flynn Ross from the University of Southern Maine and. There was, excuse me, there was a. All kinds of websites to and, and a kind of a how-to on how to go through that if that's something that we wanted to do.
Dr. Ross is amazing, isn't she?
Yes, yes, she was and I, she was just, she was so. Organized and so I could really follow along and so I tried to write everything furiously and I had to take some screenshots on that one as well. Yes.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Patrasi, do you want to go or shall I go? Okay. Let me get out my whole entire yellow tablet here. Pretty scary. Very quickly. Our keynote speaker was Judge John Broderick. He, he used to be Chief Justice. The New Hampshire Supreme Court. He had a story to tell about his two sons growing up. But his, the topic of his keynote speech was. Changing the culture surrounding mental illness. It's way past time. He. He essentially said that what the data is telling us now, that over half the mental health issues. Are, are present. In our young people by age fourteen and that. That, that really said to me that, you know. If we're, if we're all trained better as teachers, then maybe we can pick that up and start to have that taken care of. So the organization that he's working with now has come up with. A handout that I'd be happy to reproduce for anybody that would like it. It's know the five signs of mental illness. Not feeling like you, feeling agitated, are you withdrawn, caring for your, are you caring for yourself and feeling hopeless? And then steps that you can take, which is recognize the signs of emotional suffering. Express concern and offer support, act now. And care enough to follow through and follow up. And then they have a way to communicate with. Folks that can be helpful. So just the fact that. Half of. Mental illness is there by age fourteen, which is right smack dab in the middle of the, of the kids that we have. The age of the folks that we have. Really set me back a little bit. And I can't recall, two-thirds. Of the folks that have mental illness will have it then by age, and I can't remember whether it was age twenty-one or twenty-three. But it's still quite young. First clinic addressing, I went to addressing systemic, oh no, I went to advancing, advanced collective bargaining. And the superintendent went over quite a bit of that. There was a lot of discussion by the lawyers about the MEA MOU. And so that took a lot of time. It was some, some talk about the legislative changes. For this coming seasons of negotiations. They, there's going to be some stuff about teacher effectiveness rating and how it's used. And then the teacher probationary period has been reduced from three to two, which we'll hear about a little bit later. And then the mandatory salary increase. Going to thirty-seven-five and then eventually to forty thousand. We need. We need a procedure on how to do this more than we need a policy. And do we need a policy and about that? And nobody really answered that question. Dangerous behavior perpetuated by a student. That was already gone over tonight. And I don't know what this means, probably Kristen can tell me, but the hundred and twenty-day notice to bargain. Was supposedly removed. But I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. And I have the handouts from that if you'd like them in some way. Session two, managing school district employment issues during the pandemic. There was some discussion about when we do have a COVID. Vaccination, are we going to mandate vaccinating employees? Right now, some, some companies mandate flu vaccines for their employees. What are we going to do about that? And then the whole synchronous and asynchronous protection of teachers' privacy. They talked about the, the privacy rights that people that are infected, that either attend school or employed by school have. So we try to, we try to. Maintain their confidentiality, except for contact, contact tracing. Necessities. And then the new leave, we have already learned about that. My third session was providing appropriate instruction in light of learning loss and school closures and. It's something that still really concerns me. I know Mrs. White tried to reassure us at the last meeting. But there was an awful lot that was being talked about in this section. It talked about the COVID nineteen effect. That forty-six percent of our learners thought that their education was affected either moderately or severely. There's lots of data to indicate that math was impacted more than English, but English has certainly been impacted. Some schools have used a K-five, six-week. Bridging unit before going into the next year's unit. Now we have put, put out new tools, recovering goal-setting data file and a map growth goal explorer. That's free to anyone through NAWIA. And I. So I know that our students do the NAWIA. I didn't know if we were. We financially were in any kind of a place where we could use the NAWIA more for helping students. Or help teachers, help students figure out what, what they're missing because of the COVID nineteen effect. And I would just offer that as a possible, if we get more COVID money. Perhaps being able to fund more NAWIA testing might be helpful, if the teachers think it would be helpful. They're calling it affectionately the COVID slide. And now COVID, I'm now NAWIA is, has made. Has associated with Khan Academy, so that's available through NAWIA. My fourth clinic was understanding school funding. Mr. Bacchus, that many of us already know. Was presenting that, that program, so it's understanding school funding in Maine for school board members. It dealt a lot with the EPS formula, all of the sections of the EPS formula. And EPS for those that are listening is essential programs and services. And he also went over the ED two seventy-nine to help make that all more understandable. And I recommend that for any school board members. I think I got the handout on that that I could possibly make available. Clinic five was best practices for managing remote. Board meetings and hearings. I'd like to just mandate, I'd like to. I, I'd like to. Add to what Ms. Dyke had already said about having a background. So when you're doing remote board meetings or you're doing remote education for students. If you have a common background, like for Winthrop, it could be a green with a white stripe kind of background. Any of those. Any, any, anything that's behind the student that might identify the student. Or might be illegal if it was in a classroom, if you just had this common background, it would alleviate all, all of that. And you might have students that are in home situations that they really don't want to show off what the background is. I would like to recommend for school board meetings, if it's okay with everyone, and I don't know how to do it, but I hope that there's some technological. Was there, Mr. Delisle, that would know how to give all of us just a green and white background? So I don't have to invite you into my apartment kitchen every meeting. It just gets rid of all distractions, any TVs, animals, all that. So I, I'd like to experiment with that. What, what do you all say about that, school board members? I'm seeing, I'm seeing, okay, so, Mr. Superintendent, do you think we could experiment with that sometime?
Yes, I, I think I would talk to Mr. Delisle and, and talk about what that might mean.
Okay, thank you very much. We just talked about preventing video gifts. I don't, I don't think that anybody has figured out how to run hearings yet on. On Zoom and we haven't had a hearing that we've had to run. We've done executive sessions, but not. An actual hearing where you would have witnesses come in and go and all need to be. Protected with the confidentiality, so that was a question. I suggested that we develop and adapt guidelines for remote meetings. And I've sort of tried to do that with the beginning of our, what's on the top of our agenda. It probably could use some stiffing up. I went to twenty-twenty legal year in review and. You'll be glad to hear, you've already probably heard, Mr. Superintendent, that some of the latest cases would give. School administrators more discretion rather than less, which was the trend several years ago. Courts will stand back and allow administrators to do what they do. So that's nice to hear. The changes in Title Nine. And I think that we've already adapted, adopted those earlier this school year. And all about the CARES Act, you've already heard all about that. And avoiding, I went to also avoiding legal issues and synchronous and asynchronous stuff, you've heard pretty much about that. We should have a rule in the handbook for our remote folks that makes it illegal to. Or a rule against sharing a password. And then the end note speaker was a, a director of equity and equality. He doesn't believe in equality. He, he can't, you can't give everybody the same thing. Because everybody's not on a level field to begin with, so to give them equality just exacerbates inequality. He wanted also make sure that there, we understood there's a difference between diversity and actual inclusion. And. He also spoke about equity response team. And that. And that, all of us that were. That had signed up. Can access all of the sessions until November thirteenth, as well as all of their handouts. That's it. I hope I didn't put anybody to sleep. Mr. Patrasi, you're on.
Thank you. It was a real pleasure today to check my email and find that I actually had. The minutes of the meeting that I attended, which is the delegation meeting. As well as the updated version of what happened to the resolutions. I was going to tell you that I think they lied on the minutes. They said something about us adjourning at eight-thirty. Well, I was still here at nine-thirty listening to them. I think they've got problems with their clocks. We started. Around officially at three-thirty, although they asked us to be on board at three o'clock. They, they really had a lot of problems in getting everybody tuned in. We had eighty-nine participants. In the legislative delegation, each school system is invited to send one person. And I guess this is typical when you put together a lot of brilliant people in one room, they've all got to say something. So that really stretched out the decisions on the resolution and the words that we're using and everything else. But I'm going to leave it to you to look at the resolutions. I'm not going to repeat them here. But you should be able to see very quickly that the changes were minor. They were not big changes at all. But what we did find out was that. Most of the school systems represented did the same thing that we did in us, in our own meeting. In that we looked at them beforehand. We made some decisions on things that we'd like to see changed a bit. And we actually had quite a few school systems. At various times speak up and just oppose, why were we taking a stand in this area? Why do we need to? And you can tell there's a difference in thinking geographically here in the state. As my counterpart from the Portland area, as well as South Portland, Scottboro. Became very much involved in the discussions, trying to defend these resolutions. And, but that's, that's the nature of change as far as I'm concerned. But I, I also found a couple of other things in Jenny, I just wanted to mention these because. I'm, I'm real serious about the fact, everybody can read the resolutions and should read the resolutions if you want to come back and get. These are going to another committee anyway, to be finally decided upon. They become the basis of the legislative agenda for the association in the next year. But there were two things that came up. One of those. Dealt with the. It's, it's prepared for the meeting and it was under revisions. It was the fifth one. And it talked about the main school management strongly takes a position. That the rising teacher retirement costs. That were shifted to the school districts in two thousand. that the rising teacher retirement costs that were shifted to the school districts in 2013 have just got too much. In 2013, they were thirty million dollars a year in what the school districts had to pay out of their subsidies to take and pay for teacher retirement. That amount in 2015 was already up to fifty million dollars a year. And it's continued to grow ever since. That's a lot of money. And I personally was involved with the teacher retirement question. In fact, the entire state employees retirement question. And I'm very concerned about the fact that the state has done its best over the years to not make a contribution to either retirement system. For instance, what we're paying in our school district and what the other school districts are paying this year is basically what the state should be paying. They look at the investments and if they're successful, they consider that to be their investment, that we can take in that money and put it into paying for teacher retirements. It's not the way you do it. And that's one reason why. I'm hoping that the legislature will get more involved in this question. Will look at preserving retirement plans for our current employees or those within, let's say, ten years of retiring, as well as those already on retirement. But also look to put the rest of the people, especially the newcomers on social security. We really do not need to be in the retirement business. As you may remember, we had some problems with paying retirees an increase. And this has been cut in many cases to only the first twenty-two, three thousand dollars of your retirement. Do you get any type of increase? That increase is usually similar to what is given to social security recipients. But social security recipients get the increase on the entire amount. Whereas people who are in the state plans, in many cases are only getting in the first twenty-two thousand. That's not the way it should be done. Plus, we also have accumulated a very sizable debt that some people are concerned about that will ever be able to take and pay it off when it's due in about two thousand, let's say thirty-three right now. So it's, it's a very important issue and it's one I think people need to know that it wasn't our idea to pick up the teacher retirement cost. But that was passed by the legislature and that's what we have to do. And so main school management is making this their highest priority in this legislative session is to reverse this decision. That's one. Second thing was kind of interesting. We get into a discussion about charter schools. Well, it turned out, I missed this before, that the funding now for charter schools does not originate from the local district. It may be subtracted from the local district subsidy, but it comes from the state. So the whole decision on charter schools is now basically based upon the state and it's here to stay. Although they're doing evaluations and a couple have been having problems. But for the most part, that's kind of like good news too. Because I remember the first time we had to do it, that we had some problems on trying to decide what did we owe to cover the students that were attending charter schools in this district. Those are the two things I wanted to mention. Whereas the resolutions, please look at them in the email that you receive, both from Jim and also directly from the Main School Management Association.
Are they going to keep the same number of charter schools that are allowed? Or are they going to increase that number of allowed charter schools?
Sounded to me like they're going to keep ten.
Good.
And they're worried about whether all ten will still be here next year.
Well, I just, I just hope they don't increase that number.
Well, there, there was no particular discussion of increasing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski.
Welcome. And thank you for my six or seven hours participating.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Petrowski?
Actually, Josh, I think has.
Mr. Danda Whaley.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Joe. It's not really for you, but I don't know if we're moving on. Something that just kind of came into my mind was when Ms. Bells was speaking and she was saying that, like during one of her presentations, she had to take screenshots, kind of like for the notes or whatever. And I was just wondering if that kind of follows along with the video taking on Zoom, like with screenshots as well. Like, I don't know if that's to be like teacher discretion, like maybe they'll say, hey, take, like here, you can take a screenshot of these notes. Or like just as we go along, planning for any remote learning that we might have to do. I just thought of that question.
Ms. Dykett?
I, my understanding was, part of the issue was the distribution. So if you were taking a screenshot for notes where you were using that video for like an educational purpose for your own. And again, I could be wrong on that, that is fine, but you couldn't like record it and share it with someone outside of that class or outside of your means for it. Whether that be social media because of good or bad things or like sharing it and passing, like educating someone else that's not in that class. So it was my understanding, and again, I could be wrong, but we would need probably clarification on that. But things like that would be fine. And then, of course, if it was teacher, if you had already, each permission or the teacher allows permission to take a screenshot, then that would be fine.
Thank you.
That was what I wanted to ask Jim about before. And, and my question was, I thought we were developing a library of these remote presentations in the sense that they would be available to students that needed to catch up. They were absent, who knows what. But we're actually going to develop a library. I mean, we'd obviously have to get permission of the instructors and that type of thing. But, so we don't have a library? We don't have these things recorded so they can be used again?
No, I, I, but I think, you know, it's, it is one of the things we talked about, that they might have a shelf life for back of, a lack of a better term. And, and other organizations like West Main Education Collaborative and other organizations are doing, are, are creating lessons that can be created. And, and anybody who's, who, well, I mean, there's all kinds of, my wife's a PE teacher and so she has a, a remote classroom and she goes on and there's all these videos and lessons that are, that are out there recorded, but they're recorded specifically for that. So, I mean, could that happen here at some point? Maybe. And I think we're, we're a ways from that. But we haven't, we haven't intentionally done that now. We have some people who, what you're referring to, Joe, is sort of a, and I've talked about this before, the flip classroom model. And where they, the students essentially watch instruction. But as a couple of you pointed out, that that usually followed up with, with a return to class. But it's, it's, what we're doing right now is not really, is not that. So we're, we're somewhere in the middle.
I've, I've heard a discussion about that too, Joe. And one of the big concerns.
I want to say what Janet just said is, is exactly right. Just so you know, the, the real key to this whole issue is about getting permission to answer your question, Josh. It's, you know, and I, when I, I looked at my notes when she was reading, it, it says, recording without permission or sharing, recording without permission is, is illegal. And, you know, it's, it's no different than if, forget about remote learning for a second. If you're in the classroom, you can't just decide to record. You have, you know, instead of the teacher, I need, I look to record this for blah, 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 blah. And teacher says, fine, then you're fine. But if they don't say, then it's, it's not okay.
And Mr. Petrowski, I think some of the discussions I've heard concerning your question had to do with more storage in order to have all of the lessons that are asynchronous or, or synchronous stored for somebody that might be sick and, and this question, and miss a class and then be able to go back to that class. So that's another problem that school systems are having, trying to do that.
I think, oh, like, I mean, for, this is just for, I don't know, Mr. Petrowski, this might help. But for like some of my classes, like I'll be like, say in my psychology class and one of our, like one of the students doesn't make it, like that's one of my classes that I have no remote learners in. And then what she does is that she opens up a Zoom and then she starts recording it. So like all of her voice and like her face is recorded and then like the student can later go back and watch that.
Thank you. That's super. Okay, we're going to go into Roman numeral three, what some people here have been anxiously waiting for. This presentation, the superintendent spoke to me at least twice and felt very strongly about the appropriateness of this presentation. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Superintendent.
I didn't know you were going to do that. So I, thank you. I appreciate it. I, I thought you were going to do this yourself. This is like when, the first meeting with the Back to School Committee, when I didn't know I was running it. And there I was. So it is, what we had talked about was, and several people have brought this up, that the work of the Back to School Committee has been tremendous. And there are a number of people who have, who have put in a great deal of hours, way above and beyond. And so we were looking for something that we could do. A small token is obviously not, not a, we don't have a, a ton of revenue or, or ways to, to do what we'd like to do. And it'll never be worth, pay you for the time that you put in. But we did send out a, an invitation to all of you, asked you to come tonight so you could be publicly recognized, the, the members of the team. And I look around the screen, I see a number of you that are still here and I appreciate you being here. And what we did sort of settle on, and I, and again, I got permission from, I was told one thing. And then through persistence and asking over and over again, I've got the Department of Education to give us a permission to provide a small stipend for each of the members of the committee who, not everybody qualifies for it unfortunately, but I, but a lot of the people do. And the people who don't qualify for it, that's, it's, you know, it's, it's kind of sad because we, you know, we really aren't able to, to, to do that. But I do want to, this guy, I don't know if you, how you want to proceed, if you wanted to name them individually.
Well, I have their names all ready to go.
Okay, then I'll let you, I'll turn it back to you.
If that's okay.
That's great.
And I, I just want to piggyback on what the superintendent had to say. And as, as a representative of the school committee, I think one of the things that has astounded me and all the rest of us is, you folks as, as a committee did work that nobody else in the world has done before. And you were the real leaders. And we can never thank you enough or pay you enough for literally the blood, sweat and tears, the stress that was involved in even trying to figure out what it was you were supposed to do, as we were all trying to figure out what to do. As the DOE was trying to figure out what to do and then give you some direction. And then next week it would change again, and it would change again and again and again. You certainly proved your flexibility. But the stress that was put on you folks to deliver a plan that would keep our students safe and would keep our staff safe was certainly extraordinary. And for all of the school committee members, and they may want to add their, their words as well. For, for all of the school committee members and for the superintendent, we thank you so incredibly much. The folks that we are able to remunerate, I think basically are the original, the original committee that started back in June. So thanks then to the, the original committee, to Amanda Knowlton, Dr. McConnell, Mr. Jeff Ladd, Mr. Joel Stoneton, this is Marsha Luskey, to our own Sue Bells, to Mr. Larry Allen and to Mrs. Teresa Fitzgerald. The folks that came in later in the summer, yes. The folks that came in later in the summer then, that all we can do is say thank you to you. So I apologize for that. Are both our superintendents, Mr. Delisle, Mrs. White, Mrs. Fossett and Miss Sousa. So a big applause. See, how do I hit that? I'll go here and, yeah, there we go. Oh, I didn't, didn't show up on my thing. But anyway, thank you very much. There it is. Thank you very much. Do any other school committee people want to say anything? Do any recipients want to say anything?
I just want to say, Jenny, if I could.
Yes.
As you know, I've been traveling around a little bit, but I really liked the fact I've been able to tell people what this committee did. And the bringing together of people, the discussions, which weren't always in agreement. But it's the fact that it was a community trying to solve a major problem. And I just think they did a fantastic job. Especially want to thank Sue for being volunteered by us to head it to the superintendent.
Saying you're a new member, you get to do it. Community compromise, all the stuff that you had to go through was just tough. I see Dr. McConnell, did you want to say some words there? You came up.
I just, I want to thank the school committee for their support in the process. And I want to thank everybody on the committee. I know we had some tough conversations, but you know, we're through almost the first quarter of the school year. And look, look, I mean, it's been amazing. I know that a letter from a parent, a note from a parent was shared, thanking us for, or, or thanking the school. I know Melissa shared it with lots of people. And, you know, I think it's only luck in a lot of ways that we haven't had a positive yet. But I feel like, I know, well, I don't know. I think better to talk about it. I think we're very prepared. And we're not seeing school-based spread. So congratulations. You guys did a great job. So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be involved.
Thank you for being involved. Any other participants want to say anything? You certainly don't have to. And I have some comments over here from Marsha Luskey. Thank you. And from Teresa Fitzgerald. This was a terrific group to work with. Okay. Well, that was, that was a fun thing to do, huh, Mr. Hodgkin?
Yes, it was.
Yes, and it's a great idea. Thank you. Old business. I'll enter in a motion to adopt the revisions to policy IKB. Homework policy is recommended by the homework committee. So moved? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the revisions to policy IKB. Homework policy discussion. So, if you remember what Meg Cook did a year and a half ago, she was allowed, so the policies prior to second or final reading are put up on our website. And folks are invited to comment on the proposed changes. And so I have two parents, two parents on the homework policy and two parents on the next policy made comments. And I was hoping maybe Ms. Shumway, you would have a bit of a rebuttal for it. And I, I apologize, I didn't warn you ahead of time. So you could say that your, your, your headache is thriving and you have to leave right now if you wanted to. But, so, so the comment, and this is just a summary of two parents' comments. The most impactful sections were crossed out. Please retain them and live up to them. My middle schooler and my fourth grader have no homework and are sitting stagnant academically. The current MO, which would be reinforced by this. The current MO, which would be reinforced by this policy change, is absolutely not working. Another comment, again, see the above, retain the sections that have been crossed out and ask more of our kids. Please stop lowering the bar. In the interest of leaving no one behind, we're holding everyone back. So I don't know if you, I, I know the superintendent can rebut that. Did you, that kind of conversation being the school committee lays onto the homework committee?
Yeah, sorry, um, printing is going on in the background in this room. Um, so I apologize for the excessive noise. Um, so the discussion around homework, um, and having a uh, paragraph in the homework policy that set the amount of time for each age group and having it be a requirement for each class, saying that you need to have twenty minutes of homework, what that was creating was, um, busy work being sent home rather than purposeful homework. So the language doesn't say that there will be no homework given. We had a long conversation about that there is a purpose for homework. But the conversation was that homework should be given and it should be purposeful. And it shouldn't just be, um, extending classroom time. And if the student can, um, display proficiency in, uh, any sort of topic, um, then they can, and they can do it in ten problems, then why are they doing it in fifty? And so it was, um, you know, that is why last time, last meeting, when, um, when I reported out on this, there was the conversation at the committee to have, um, professional development for teachers around what purposeful and meaningful homework was, um, what it is. And, and so making sure that what, um, is assigned is just that. So, the purpose of the policy isn't to remove homework altogether. It's to make sure that what's being sent home and what students are doing on their own time is, um, has a direct connection to what is being done in class and a direct connection to whether or not that student has shown proficiency. Um, so for, for students who are experiencing no homework right now, actually is based on our old policy, because this policy hasn't gone into effect yet. So that's a different issue that would be need to taken up, be need to be taken up with the individual, um, teacher rather than the policy, um, because like I said, this policy hasn't gone in place yet. Um, so if, if a parent is feeling like that their student isn't getting the practice that they need, then, um, then that would be a conversation that they would need to have with their, their students, their child's, um, teacher. Did I do okay for off the cuff and with a throbbing?
You did great, thank you.
Okay.
Um, any other, um, any, any other discussion from school committee members?
Can I just add a little something?
Yes.
So from a teacher's perspective too, um, there's so much, so many different thoughts on homework. Um, but what's really tough as well is that home is not always the best place for kids to learn. And I feel like in my class, and I know I do not teach in Winthrop, that I have a lot more kids who can't do homework at home because they don't have the best learning environments at time. So you create the haves and the have-nots in your classroom, which is something we try really hard not to do. Um, and I know that that may be a reflection on, and I, again, I'm not speaking for Winthrop teachers or, or whosever teachers, um, kids not having homework, but I, I'm just wondering if that may be some of the reasoning behind it as well. Um, just to put that perspective out there.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I just want to quickly add that the, um, from, from my perspective, when I hear those kinds of comments, not surprised. Uh, I, I think that has been the historical argument, and I think that it's based upon a, a, um, I would say a misguided belief that requiring students to do work outside of home um, has some other, has very little to do with academics and more to do with, uh, teaching them habits about, uh, planning their time or those types of things, which quite frankly is, has never been successful, and I agree a hundred percent with what Janet just said. Um, you know, and I shared with, uh, you and, and, and Sue, and we were doing, in the policy committee, talking about this, that, you know, our, our goal as a school is to get kids to work as hard as they possibly can, uh, anytime that we have them in front of us, and, and not leave it up to chance of, uh, what they might or might not be going home to, either taking care of their siblings, um, home where they're, where they're not going to have a, an appropriate place to work. Um, we have a hard enough time sort of controlling the work that they do, and with this city right in front of us. Um, and so to, to, uh, have an expectation, arbitrary expectation about, you know, X amount of minutes doing, uh, work outside of school, um, does not have the desired effect that, that people historically have, have thought. Um, so I, I, I just, I, I, I wasn't a part of this. I, I didn't help put this together. Um, I think Kristen did a great job of explaining where the committee was coming from. This is not to say that, that homework shouldn't happen, but it really needs to be meaningful, it needs to be connected to what's happening in the classroom. Um, and it, it should not be just some sort of arbitrary, um, assignment, or, uh, it should be a true extension or, or a, or a beginning, or, I mean, there's lots and lots of good reasons that people, um, can, can do homework, but, um, I, I think everything that I believe should be, uh, in a, in a policy about homework is captured in this very brief paragraph.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
You're muted, Joe.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. I'll entertain a motion to adopt procedure DJ dash R federal procurement manual and exhibits one and two.
So moved?
Been moved and seconded that we accept procedure DJ JAS R federal procurement manual and exhibits one and two. Is there any discussion? Mr. Petrowski?
Could you explain to me, besides the fact that, uh, obviously somebody wants us to adopt this, why do we adopt this? Is this just dealing with awards? You know, grant some money or something like that, or?
Yeah, let, let me read, uh, I, I got two parents, no, yes, they are parents. I had two parent com- comments, and let me read you their summary, and the answer that I give to that will be the answer that, um, will partially answer your question. And then I think we can go after the rest of your question. One of the comments said, "You did not publish the previous procurement policy, so to what am I comparing it?", question mark. Another comment, uh, again, additional explanation of the prior procurement policy and statement of need would have been helpful. And then, um, another comment about, the question was, "Do you have suggestions?", and the comment was, "Yes, section D is discriminatory against anyone not a woman and not a minority. Frankly, such policy is insulting both, um, to women and minorities. They, we are fully capable of competing fair and square." So, um, the reason why you had no, no previous policy, um, with which to compare this proposed policy is that this is a new federal policy that has become a mandatory policy for us to incorporate into our, uh, policy book. And it deals with any programs that, um, that, that, that get federal funds or for which we use federal funds to procure anything. The, the programs that come to mind immediately, um, that might use this are the most would be our food service program and our special ed program. I might get corrected on the special ed program here in a second. I don't, I don't see Ms. Fossett coming on right away, so perhaps I'm in, uh, safe water there. One of the reasons why we found that it was lacking was because an audit was done of our food service program, and the auditor found this, um, policy wasn't in our policy book, and it's a mandatory policy. So it was an oversight that was caught, um, thankfully. How'd I do, Joe?
You did fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, I don't understand, uh, the comment from the parent or the person who wrote it regarding, uh, it wasn't necessary that, uh, women or somebody else doesn't really need this, that I'm not sure if I understand that at all, so.
Well, um, that person apparently thinks that everyone is more than capable of successful competition with everyone else, with successful outcomes. So, no.
It's on page fourteen or six, I don't know which number you go by, Joe. Section D, I think, is the, because I, I was just looking that up as well. Because it talks specifically about women and minority.
But it's not anything that we can deal with. We have no allowance or capability of changing eve- even a "uh" or a "the" in this particular policy. Are we good? Any further questions?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I'm yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to new business. I'll entertain a motion. Now, this one's been rewritten, okay? I'll entertain a motion to set the substitute pay to ninety dollars as per policy GCGA.
So moved?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we set, that we accept the policy to set the substitute pay to ninety dollars as per policy GCGA discussion. And, uh, to the public, I have been remiss. I have not allowed, I ha- have not mentioned public comment. So if the public wants to comment on this particular motion, please type in your comments, um, in the chat. Uh, Ms. Fossett?
The superintendent has, I think, lost his feed, just so that you're aware. And I just realized that. I was moved to being the host. And so I just need to go back and capture that vote so that I can get that on the notes for him, because he obviously isn't there to catch it.
So, um, the motion was made.
The motion.
The motion was made by Ms. Bells, and it was seconded by Ms. Dykett.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything we can do to help, uh, our students?
I'm gonna send him, I'll send him a quick text and see if everything's okay.
Okay, thank you. So, the comment that I've gotten about this particular issue, will this be retro for subs from the beginning of the school year? I don't know the answer to your question, but I'm gonna guess, no.
So Jenny, can I make a comment?
Yes.
So, we, as, so this is my question about this policy. So in the policy, the language says that the, the pay rate will be set by the school committee. So, in the budget meetings, we received a memo in March from Superintendent Brown requesting or the reason, reasoning behind increasing the pay rate to ninety dollars. We actually had a discussion during that meeting. And then in our budget, the line item for substitute pay was increased. We approved our budget. So isn't that the school committee setting the rate? So I, so I know that there's a discrepancy, that we didn't actually have a motion like this. But the school committee did in fact set the rate when it improved the increase to that line in our budget. And so to me, um, it, that was when this was brought to my attention, that, um, you know, that the, the subs were not getting paid the new rate. Um, I, that's my question. Do we need to be more specific in our policy? Change the language that says the rate will be set by the school committee via motion and public session? Because I feel like that the way that it's worded right now, the school committee did approve the increase of the rate because we approved past the budget and had a specific budget discussion about the increased rate.
I know that we had it, I know it was presented to us in a memo, and, uh, we had a quick discussion about it. And, um, and the only reason we find ourselves where we are tonight is because, um, Ms. Sousa read the, read the policy and could not find, once she researched in the agenda, that we specifically approved that ninety dollars. I understand how you're getting the fact that you think that we have approved the ninety dollars because it was, um, is the right word, implicit in, uh, in the budget which we approved. So I'll, I'll let the superintendent, um, I don't know, um, Mr. Superintendent, we have a question here from Ms. Fitzgerald that says, "Will this retro, will this, um, will this be retro for subs from the beginning of the school year?" And I just ventured a guess and said, "No, but I'll leave that one up to you to answer, as well as to make a comment to Ms. Shumways."
Yep. Okay, thank you, and I apologize, you may or may not notice, but I got kicked off the internet, so I was gone for a while.
Well, Ms. Fossett did bring, did bring it to our attention, and she took notes real fast.
I did hear, I did hear all that, and I completely understand what, uh, what Kristen was saying. I, I would feel better if the board took, um, direct action, because quite frankly, you, we put lots and lots of stuff in the budget. Um, the, the budget process, uh, putting numbers in there is, is a way to justify a number that we ask the communities to support, and then, um, it doesn't always necessarily relate, in a perfect world, it does necessarily relate to, um, to, to pay whatever, and for instance, a, a really kind of gross example, but I think makes the point. Uh, earlier I talked about the difference between the money that we had budgeted, or put in the budget for salaries and what we actually pay, be, you know, because of retirees and, and different people that will hire whatever. So I think it's right. I think everything, that, from my perspective, the process is exactly right. Um, I just would have expected in, in, um, in our committee meeting, uh, Ms. Bells asked about the poss- about why, you know, should we put the number in the policy, and, and, um, we both agreed, uh, both, meaning you, Chairperson Guyer and myself, that that is not what we intended. Um, that we did not want to revisit the policy every time, uh, we want to change the sub-rate, but instead that the, the school committee should, um, should, should not just imply, but should explicitly vote on a, a number, and when that number changes, they should vote on another number and, and not just put it in the budget. So I understand the logic. I, I, I don't have any issue with it. Um, I think the board should vote, but I also do, um, agree, so this is gonna sound weird, I do agree with what, uh, Kristen was saying, because, you know, that being the case, and I think the expectation of the board, that we probably should go back and, and, and pay the people who've been subbing since the beginning of the year, um, the difference between what we paid them and, um, what they should have been paid.
You think we should?
I think we should.
Okay, there you go, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Well, that's what I think. You guys decide that.
Well, I think I want to decide on the, uh, motion that we have right now.
Yeah. Oh, can I just?
Mr. Petrowski?
I want to, uh, echo what Kristen said. I remember this discussion because I actually brought it up before the meeting, uh, with the, uh, with, with the Superintendent Brown. I happen to think that ninety may not even be competitive anymore, based upon what I'm hearing, not necessarily next door, but from other people who are saying that, uh, they're getting as much as a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Thank you. I will just tell you all that we have such a serious lack of subs. It's, it's astounding. It's, it's worse than I had anticipated. On any given day, we have no subs, period. People are just too afraid to come in. And paying people more might incentivize people to try it. I mean, we're working and we're doing great and we're staying safe and it can be done. It absolutely can be done. But I don't think a lot of people are, I don't know, ready to take that risk. But certainly more money might help push people in that direction.
Thank you.
I just, I just have one quick comment. So did you, did you make any changes to this policy? No? Because where it says, "A compensation," and it says, "The amount paid should be determined by the Board of Education." And we had been going through and changing all Board of Education to School Committee.
Oh, right.
So.
You know, as it turned out, the motion was incorrectly written to begin with. We're not, we're not doing a revision on.
Right, we're not doing a revision to the policy. But that should be revised.
We'll put it on the list.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're just discussing whether or not to finalize that ninety, ninety dollars. Okay, I'm gonna call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
No.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes four to one. Before I move on, there's some comments here from the Back to School Committee folks that, from Mr. Allen, "Thank you to the committee, the community, and all those that invested so much in a successful reopening. We are pleased to be a part of your school system." We're pleased you are a part of our school system. And from Mr. Hodgkin to everybody, "Thanks to the whole committee. I appreciate your time and commitment to this very important work." Oh, Ms. Dykett said her feed keeps on freezing too. She's there now. All right. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to B, "Motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy EBCA Emergency Management Plan."
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept for first reading the revisions, the policy EBCA Emergency Management Plan. And what are those revisions, Ms. Bells?
To the emergency management plan?
Yeah, do we have any yet?
Yes.
Well, one of the things we're going to be doing is, like Kristen just mentioned, to change the Board of Education to School Committee.
Right. And we're gonna put into a tickle file because it says here that the plan is implemented in each school and evaluated on an annual basis. And that the school board, which has to be changed, the school committee, will approve the plan annually, which I can't remember ever doing. So we're going to put the approval of, the annual approval of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan into a tickle file so that it is reminder that every year, this management plan, specific to each building, has to be reviewed and approved annually by the school committee. So, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr., the superintendent is going to take a look at how long ago and how much work it will. Well, you can see that it was last, it was adopted in two thousand and nine. He's going to see if there are, you know, any legal changes that have to be incorporated since two thousand and nine. And he'll talk with his administrators to see how much work that will entail and try to place it appropriately within the school year to, to get it back to the school committee. So that's, that's the plan there. Any further discussion? Mr. Superintendent, I was just thinking about this. Wouldn't it be best to table this for a later time when you have more of a chance? Or shall we just go ahead and, I guess we'll put it up on this, on the website and we'll have a further discussion as to whether or not it needs to be tabled, or if you can bring to it any additions or deletions at the second reading.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend. And, and I don't know what the changes will be. But I, I think generally speaking, we reviewed this policy and as we, as we know, we, we made the revisions, which is honestly just changing the school board to the school committee. And if there's more substantive change to that, then we can, we can always bring that forward to the second reading. And it's always up to, that's the process the school committee follows. And if, and if we find at our next meeting that the changes are too much for us to digest and, and/or approve at the next meeting, then we, we, we don't approve it on a second reading and we push it off. But I, I would, I'd rather not take this out of the queue, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Any further discussion by school committee people? And we welcome community comments typed on the chat to inform this next vote of the school committee.
Ginny, while you're waiting for any comments, did we skip F? Did we skip F, standing committee reports?
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay, just to go back for that, because we did do some warrants, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not checked off here on my list. While we're waiting for any comments, Finance, standing committee report.
Sue and I got together and did five, six, and seven with Amanda being in there, which was very helpful. She's doing an incredible job. I mean, the invoices and the POs and the orders that we are seeing going through are astronomical. We're going back in on Wednesday to do some more. But Amanda's been very organized and very helpful in working and keeping all of our COVID and CARES Act money invoices separate and all that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you to her and everyone else that's dealing with that, because it's not just her, but.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee, you're, you're seeing, we met before this meeting and you're, you're seeing that progress through in the agenda now. Negotiations?
Joe and I met with Superintendent Hodgkin on October twenty-seventh to discuss options for negotiating with the, the teachers. And I responded back to Mrs. Colton, but we don't have a date yet. Nothing set for moving forward.
Thank you. And anything for the curriculum committee?
No new updates.
Thank you, Mrs. White. And renovation, new construction, grade school maintenance?
I don't have anything specific. Chairperson Guyer and I had a very enjoyable what-if type of conversation, but nothing specific at this point.
Thank you very much. Now, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Jana. Sometimes I think I need a babysitter, but thanks for reminding me. We have a motion on the floor about the first reading of the Emergency Management Plan. Is everybody ready to vote on that? Can I see any comments about that from the public? So I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
If you send me yes, sorry, I keep getting cut out.
Okay, sorry. Yep, yep. Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to C, "I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy GCOA Staff Evaluation." And while we're talking about it, this is the public's opportunity to comment on this particular policy. Please type your comments into the chat section at this time.
So moved?
Second.
Changes? Ms. Bells?
Yes, specifically to paragraph two, the last sentence. It says, "As it's written, probationary teachers shall be placed on an annual evaluation cycle consisting of at least two formal observations and a summative evaluation each year during the first three years of employment." And that needs to be changed to two years.
And why does it need to be changed to two years?
Because by the legislation, the definition of probationary went from three to two. And so the Department of Education has changed that.
Thank you very much. Discussion?
I, I don't think we need to say this every time, but obviously, we'll just, we'll just say this one more time. Every time it says school board or board, we need to change it to school committee.
Thank you. I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I'm yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy IAA Service Learning. At this time, the public will please type in any of their comments that will help inform the decision-making of the school committee. I'll entertain that motion, please.
Oh, so moved?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
I'd like to know what the changes were, if there were, so.
I was just about to call on Ms. Bells for those changes. Thank you. Are there any changes at all to the service learning policy, Ms. Bells?
Is it my understanding that you want to change it from service learning to community service?
No, we can, we can go ahead and review this policy and accept it. But we will, in the future, be reviewing the community service, which has, which has to be tinkered with a little bit because we eliminated community service hours last spring. And so those total number of hours for graduation will have to be tinkered with a little bit. But this is service learning is something else. And so service learning as an educational program is, as far as I understand, still a very acceptable and viable educational program if, if teachers have the time to do it. Ms. Dykett?
And just the notes, it has the wrong policy in the box. On the agenda, it says, "Move to accept for first reading," and then it goes back to the substitute one.
Oh.
So that just needs to be changed in the notes.
Mr. Superintendent, do you see that?
Looking.
On the agenda, in box D.
D.
Oh, yeah, I do.
So that, that needs to be changed. Good catch, Ms. Dykett. Thank you.
Ms. Dykett's as tired as she says she is. She's pretty sharp.
I'm getting nitpicky.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none? And are there any comments? No. I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, on the agenda, the agenda calls for public comments. And this is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything Winthrop educational. So please take this opportunity, if you care to, to chat your, to type your comments in the chat. Now, I forgot that I promised everybody that I would be ready with a song that lasted, you know, like thirty seconds while we wait for the public to have this opportunity. I forgot about that responsibility. I wonder if I can do an off-the-cuff song, as well as you did off-the-cuff, Ms. Shumway. And you too, Mr. Superintendent. I guess I caught you on a whim a little bit. You did, you did great.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
We're not gonna have a report from the different school principals tonight? That's good.
Did you want that on the next agenda?
I, I enjoy it. That's the problem. I think it's great.
It helps you know what's going on, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Did you get that okay, Mr. Superintendent?
I, I would be happy to talk about it further. I'm not really crazy about that idea.
About it in the pre-agenda meeting?
Yep. Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, it's eight-thirty and we're just beginning to there.
Well, that's, that's fine. I was just wondering. I didn't see it on the agenda and I forgot to bring it up earlier.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any comments. So, school committee comments. Why don't we start with Ms. Dykett?
I don't have a ton to say, just, I think it's pretty awesome that we are all still in school right now and appreciate everyone's efforts to do so. I know state numbers are quickly rising. So just wishing everyone well and keep up the good work. And thank you.
Mr. Petrowski?
I would echo that because I think my biggest concern right now is that we continue, actually, we, the staff continues to do what they're doing to keep the, themselves safe, as well as the students safe. Certainly, the news that the state is moving into our area with more investigations of the COVID situation is not really encouraging to what we're trying to do. And let's just hope we get through it. So that's basically, I've been concerned about that all day long.
Thank you. Josh?
So, just two things. Tuesday, from what I gather, was a pretty good day for practice. What I hear from students, just from like the little bits of information that I've heard from word of mouth and also just people that I've asked, they said that it's going well. And ones that weren't as successful, I'm looking to bring that back to our student leadership team, which met today. And we talked about little ways to boost morale, maybe through the announcements, to keep, to reinforce the idea that we're in school and that it's a gift and that we should keep going because we're doing great. And we're one of the last schools that really has had to really do anything and maybe go remote for a few days. And so just reinforce.
Knock on wood, Josh.
Yeah, knock on wood. And so maybe through announcements, just like little light ways, light reminders. And also just. And also just also just addressing things about the student body, like we talked about also school lunches and how to get those numbers up as well and strategies and whatnot and hoping to see how that goes. But that was about it.
Great, Mrs. Wheat. We'll appreciate that. I know, I hear a lot of stuff, Josh, about you know, COVID fatigue, pandemic fatigue, quarantine fatigue. This is going to go on for a while, from what I understand. And so, anything you can do to help re-energize all of our students about the necessity to, for them to stay safe and to help help everything. And they're trying to stay safe in order to help everybody else in our community stay safe. So, anything you can do around that, I think is just really incredibly important to do. Thank you. Emily?
I just wanted to give a little update. So, grades nine through 11 took the PSATs last Thursday and it was stressful, but the classes overall, it went really smoothly from my perspective and from what I heard from other students. So, what you kind of touched upon earlier, I do definitely feel like COVID has impacted learning in terms of stress and just sort of how everybody is feeling and having the different schedule and remote days, but I still feel like the school year is going very well academically.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Shumway?
Sure. Thanks for remembering me this meeting.
I was going to say something and then I decided not to. Try not to forget Ms. Bells.
Oh, yes, right. Okay, so just real quick. One of the things that I keep hearing is the difference, the different levels of communication that parents are receiving. Some schools are doing really great. I keep hearing over and over again that the middle school is communicating with its parents really well. So, Mrs. Chris, if you're still on, congratulations to you. I know that personally for me, that the high school, that Mr. Campbell posts things on the website, but the problem with that is, is that if you don't check the website regularly, you don't know things are there. So, my comment again is, and I guess a question for for you Superintendent Hodgkin. How did the conversation go with the town manager about looking into the school being able to use a system like the town has for email notifications that when something gets posted on a certain topic, that an email or text notification goes to the subscriber? Because I think that that would be extremely helpful in the high school situation. I can't speak to the grade school. I don't have students in that school, nor do I really encounter parents in that school. So, I don't know how the grade school parents feel about the communication. But it would be really great that if something got posted on the website that, at the high school, that an email notification would go out letting parents know that it's out there.
So, I had several weeks ago, actually right after we asked, we talked to Mr. Colbrook. And one of the first things we discovered is that our website and the town's website are not exactly the same. So, since then, I talked to Tiff Shaw, who's on this call. I'm not going to make Tiff jump in unless she wants to. And she's been doing some research. She's been working with, I believe his name is Richard from the library, who you know, who does it. Oh, there she is. Tiff, do you want to explain this?
I've reached out and need to follow up with him. He's the one who runs the town website and the one that I'm trying to make contact with to get the information about what they use and if it's something we can use with, what we use to run our websites through or not, or what it would mean for a change for us in order for that to happen. So, I am working on tracking that down. I'm sorry, I don't have that for you yet. That is on my list of things to keep working on.
Awesome. Thank you for looking into that.
Thanks, Tiff.
Thank you. Ms. Bells?
I just wanted to say again how much I enjoyed the MSMA Conference and the opportunity to go back and look at some of the things that I didn't get a chance to look at because they weren't live. So, I really enjoyed it a lot. It's a great resource.
Thank you, Ms. Bells. And I really appreciated the MSMA Conference too. I always come away with great learnings. So, that was wonderful. And I'll end up with what I've ended up with since last June or so. And saying that you know, it's obvious that both our Back to School Committee came up with a plan and it's obvious that our community is working the plan. And again, I'm going to knock on some wood here. We have been very fortunate. And so, again, I appreciate all of the many efforts during this pandemic that people have done in order to keep our students and our staffs safe. There's not one of us that doesn't agree, I don't believe, that in-person education for most students is the best way to educate. And so, it's important also to our teachers that they be allowed to have those in-person classes. So, again, I'll say that I, this is a year. It's probably going to be at least a year and a half that the most important word here is cooperation. And the opposite of cooperation is rebelliousness in my mind. And I know that in our community, we have people that go from both ends of the continuum that there are folks that believe that this pandemic is nothing but a fraud and will be gone tomorrow. And there are folks that are ultra-safe. Those folks that don't believe in it are rebellious about the things that we're asking our students and our staff and our parents to do to help keep their students and our staff safe. This is not a time, though, for rebelliousness. This is a time for cooperation. And I just, we have Thanksgiving coming up and then we have the rest of the holidays coming up where people will want to get together. And I ask that everybody just give that some real thought. And again, to think about that word cooperation, which is what is keeping our students in-person learning right now. So, again, I thank you for all of your efforts, but I ask you to please maintain this COVID vigilance and cooperation with all that's being asked of you all to do. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Bells?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Dykett?
Yes, and I tried to second that. I'm like, why is she seconding after me? I didn't realize I was muted. Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
And I vote to adjourn as well. Motion is unanimously passed. Meeting is adjourned. And thank you, everybody, for joining us so very much.